We have a foundation program and offers a scholarship that provides up to seventy-five dollars in reimbursement and is a reimbursement-based scholarship. So they have to pay for the program upfront and then they provide a copy of the receipt. And then in the Arca Chela resident and it was a program that's either offered by one of our UCL or by Desert Rec, then they get reimbursement for something like that.
Yes. Is there a name for it or just scholarship?
My foundation.
Partnering with the foundation. Thank you.
Commissioners, we also have our alternate commissioner Ayala, who's a returning commissioner as well. So we always have identified an alternate commissioner moving forward because we sometimes, to make sure that we can have our monthly meetings, it really allows that fluidity when we sometimes have some big.
And the picking of chair and co-chair, who does that go through? I mean, who's picking that? Let's talk about this before we get into like.
So we'll be looking for.
Since, since you've been here the longest. Open on that spot right now. Somebody's sweating. Yeah.
I mean, I was a little human outside.
I was just being the shadow and then talking when we need to, they go back to it. But I mean, either always.
Are we good?
Have you found something good spot? Good thing to try out and.
Everyone, if, if the commission's ready, I'll pick us off today, just since we don't have a chair or a vice chair for this meeting. I'll start the meeting, but after the chair is selected, then the chair would run us through the agenda.
Okay.
And I will assist as, as needed. No worries, no pressure. But usually the, the, you know. So the, the, the chair or the vice chair usually kicks off the meeting, but I'm, I'm happy to do this. And this usually the clerk, which I'm saying that's the clerk for today's meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order today at six, uh, four thirty-one. And I'm gonna go ahead and do the first item on the agenda, which would be the Pledge of Allegiance and. Thank you. I want to do a call to order. Um, sorry, the call to order, roll call. Commissioner Granados.
Present.
Commissioner Caballero.
Here.
Commissioner Avila.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Gallego.
Present.
And Commissioner Ayala.
Here.
Thank you. With that, approval of the agenda, at this time, the commissioner may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request moving out of an item on the agenda. Um, there are no changes to the agenda. At this time, I'd be asking for a, a motion and a second um, for approval of the agenda as presented.
I approve like that?
A motion?
Motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call. Um, of all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda moves forward, approval of the minutes. Regular, uh, it's the regular meeting minutes of April eighteenth, which is our last meeting. I know that the majority of you were not here at that time, so we'll still be looking for um, moving them forward as a record and file. Can they get a motion for that?
A motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion moves forward. With that, we will go to item number two on the agenda, which is nomination of, for the position of chair. Uh, in order to move forward on this, we will need a motion. Um, and then a second for that motion. If there's no second, then the motion dies. Um, and then someone can introduce another motion.
I make a motion that Commissioner Avila for chair. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Um, congratulations, Commissioner Avila as chair. Um, can you continue moving us through the agenda?
Yes, so the, we present the three, right?
Yes.
Nomination for the position of vice chair.
Any nominations?
I make the motion, uh, for Commissioner Marcos.
Marcos.
Marcos for vice chair. A second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I do know that, um, the president of the Coachella Valley Soccer League is coming. Um, he's on his way. He actually went to the wrong city facility. Um, he's using it to, meeting with us at the yard. So if we could give him a couple of minutes, I can probably move ahead to number five if the commission would be agreeable. And then we'll move back to number four to allow them some time to come through, but they did provide us, um, some information that is before you on the dais. So with that, um, Jason, if it's okay, we'll go to number five and I can scroll through that. This item comes to the commission on a bi-annual basis. So we have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the Desert Recreation District for services that they provide out of the Bagduma Community Center. Um, and the term, and the term is up for that MOU. So it's before you this evening for recommendation to move it forward. And currently that thank you, Jason. Currently that, um, the services are offered at the community center include Mondays and Wednesdays. Fit after, fit after fifty. It's offered in the morning from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. This programming is free. And then on, they have also worked with Imagine Schools to offer soccer developmental programming that'll be offered during the summer at Imagine Schools um, on Mondays and Wednesdays. Tuesdays at the Bagduma Community Center is beginning ballet. Uh, excuse me, beginning ballet fueclorico. There's an advanced for older age range, um, offered thereafter. So there's firstly, beginning class at five fifteen, followed, um, at seven fifteen by the more advanced class. They're also offering piano on Tuesdays, uh, move, move and play. And that one, I believe, is also at Imagine Schools, as is basketball developmental program. And Lindsay's Full Body Fitness is offered on Tuesdays in the afternoon. Um, and then the fees are identified next to the programming there. So beginning ballet fueclorico is fifty-five, as is the advanced version. The piano class is seventy. Move, um, and play is free. And then basketball developmental is sixty dollars and forty dollars for the full body fitness program. Those are monthly costs for the program. And these are all eligible again for the foundation scholarship program. Wednesdays, um, at Imagine School, I did include the Imagine School, although Imagine School is obviously not part of the MOU, but I thought it'd be important for the commission to be aware of some of the additional programming that's offered to Coachella residents as a re, as a result of the relationship built with Desert Recreation District. Um, and this is something that's, was also negotiated with Imagine Schools through the REC district relationship. So that's great because in the summer, really indoors are needed for programming to continue, which is what Imagine Schools provides in this case. Pickleball, um, is another new program for the summer. Um, that is going to be at Imagine Schools and it is forty dollars. On Thursdays, um, there is a, a tiny soccer stars that will be available in the mornings. It's twenty dollars for enrollment per month. Dance, Play and Pretend is from four to four forty-five at the community center, uh, forty-two per month. Guitar also at the community center is from five, about a one-hour program, all of these classes. And then basketball developmental is again at Imagine Schools and that's a sixty-dollar enrollment. Fridays, we have Lindsay's Full Body Fitness, um, for forty-dollar enrollment in the, in the morning at this time. On Tuesdays, it's in the afternoon and on Fridays, it's in the morning. And on toddler and knee fitness is offered in the morning on Fridays for a fifty-dollar enrollment. And beginning ballet is forty-two dollars a month and it is on Fridays in the, in the afternoon. And so that's kind of, uh, basically all the programming that's offered uh, through the Desert Recreation District at the Bagduma Community Center throughout the week. Moving into the summer, um, our kids are coming out of school and summer school started. And we will be offering, um, a summer camp at the Bagduma Community Center and that starts just after school. You know, terms out and then this year, because of the way that the summer sessions work, usually there's three, three weeks sessions, but because of the way it falls this year, um, we're doing two, three-week sessions and then two individual one-week sessions because we didn't have, we were short a week essentially in the way that the summer schedule falls. Um, the camp is from seven-thirty AM till six PM and each session is three hundred and sixty dollars. And scholarships are available, um, through the MOU that is be, is being presented this evening. This MOU has been in place since about two thousand and eleven and so we renew it every two years. Um, the scholars, the camp cost did go up a bit this year, but it is still eligible for the scholarships that's available through the MOU. The MOU provides a hundred and twenty dollars for each Coachella resident that wants to sign up for any of the sessions. So if they want to sign up a child for all three, for example, or all two and the other sessions, um, they would be eligible for the one-twenty each time. And then in addition, they're also eligible for the foundation scholarship, um, at one of those times. Each child is available one time a year. So that does drop, um, the amount per session potentially to one sixty-five between the MOU and then the foundation scholarship. And, um, part of the MOU also provides, um, three swim passes for residents. Um, we usually try to reach three hundred, just varies a little bit depending on, uh, adults and youth. Passes essentially, and it, we do start handing those out. Uh, the first week of June, I believe, Operation Splash, which just kicks off the opening of the pool. It's, um, off of memory, I believe it's June sixth, and we'll send out that calendar date to the commission. So you guys have it, can put it on your calendar if you'd like to join us. It is, um, it's a fun kind of first opening of the pool. We, last year, we did, the first time, we did also provide free hot dogs, chips and sodas for the kiddos, um, and water, um, fruit, water juices. So it's a, it's a nice fun event to the, for the kiddos, my apology. Um, and with that, um, that is what the swim passes are for. Then we have movies in the park and we used to do these all in one kind of like one shot in the summer, but the summer months are a little harsh on us even in the evenings. So we split it up and did four movies, um, in May and four movies in October. And our current May, um, series is going on right now. Is every Friday at Bagduma Park and it's near the Mega Street site. Additional programming. Let's see, we've got additional programming that happens throughout the year at the community center, as well as I wanted to mention some of the fall programming that happens just, um, that right now is not showing listed in the prior slide that I showed for the reason of the, primarily the heat months. So annually, we also do the teen social nights. Halloween carnival has become very popular. Parts and crafts are usually done in February around Valentine's Day. Uh, the prom just giveaway has been very popular with our community as well. And the extravaganza has grown substantially in the last couple of years. Cookies with Mrs. Claus Leaders in Training is offered usually in the summer. Um, and it's being offered for junior high school age, uh, middle school as well as high school age groups. Um, and then we did introduce Loteria Nights this last year and that was popular. Um, and those will come back, um, during their annual period of time during the year. These, these are usually one-offs. And then the recurring programming in the fall is the program that you see listed. Um, here, youth sports conditioning, ready, set, run, intro to street hockey, basketball training zone. Um, and those will come back in the fall when it cools off. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The physical impact to the MOU is, um, going up about two thousand dollars. So it's, it usually ran around twenty-four thousand and it's going to go to twenty-six and it's primarily because there's a little bit more cost incurred to the movies in the park component of the MOU. The other components, um, are staying pretty standard. Um, there's, we usually allocate about eleven thousand to the scholarships. The Movies in the Park is going to cost us nine thousand and the net difference thereof is coming, is being paid for, for the swim passes.
I have questions. Um, how is the community finding out about this information?
Uh, so we do it on multiple facets. So we do social media, Desert Rec does social media as well. It's, it's in the brochure that gets mailed out to all the residents. Um, and we usually also put it in our quarterly newsletter, but I think the most, um, the vehicles that are most probably, uh, absorbed our social media, honestly. So that, uh, Movies in the Park, we also did radio ads for as well.
Is, uh, the social media ads through the Coachella, um, City of Coachella?
City of Coachella and we also have Instagram.
Instagram. Okay. And that's the City of Coachella?
Yes.
Um, you know, is it possible for, um, the Parks and Recreation to have its own social media account where we can pump out this type of information?
I don't think any of our commissions have their own separate page. It's all run through the, the city itself.
Okay.
I have a question. Does the City of Coachella have a Facebook page where they advertise this as well?
That's the social media. So, so social media for us is Facebook and primarily Instagram. That seems to be the most popular with the community. Uh, we added Instagram probably a couple of years back. We were only doing, uh, Facebook before. So we have, we, and we did have, and we have Twitter as well. So all of those are the different facets that we use for social media.
Okay. And it's the same for like the, the, the resident owned, the pass of the first three hundred passes for, uh, the splash, the pool, like, uh, how would they apply for that or how do, would they get, um, that pass, right, to the first three hundred?
So, um, we, we have advertised that through social media, through written newsletters that are mailed out as well as the program that the Desert Rec sends out every quarter that's listed in there. So those are all identified in that way. Um, if they attend Operation Splash, then there is also, and also in the program that DRD sends out, there is a free Friday night where they can sign up for those passes. So they can go to the pool for free without paying and that's, they can also list themselves for the free pass.
Cool.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner Granados, you were gonna mention something.
Thank you. Um, how, how do we come about choosing the programs that are offered and what is their attendance like?
So attendance wise, um, well, actually to answer your first question. Uh, these were first introduced in two thousand and eleven. They seem to have been popular programs for the community, so they all continue. Um, the, uh, Movies in the Park is a program that's offered a majority of the cities in the valley and we wanted to make sure we were also being able to provide that service, uh, to Coachella. Um, and we have seen attendance for that program to run around a hundred and fifty to four hundred. It varies. Um, depending on what week you go for a variety of different reasons. I think, I don't think that there's a consistent weekend made that, um, we've had the same numbers year after year, right? So some of the weeks are a little higher and some of them are lower. Um, with respect to, uh, the swim passes, we always sell out. We never have extra. Um, so I think that that is definitely obviously well received. Um, they do have to show some kind of proof of residency. It doesn't have to be, um, a state issued identification, but it has to be at least a bill or something to that effect that affirms that they obviously are Coachella resident. Um, with respect to the scholarship program, uh, there, that one kind of, um, goes up and down a little bit on us, um, as sometimes we have more attendees in the program than, than others. And in that case, we would roll those funds over to the following year or we would roll it into one of the other programs listed and like the swim passes, we could augment that. But for the most part, they all get used.
Great. Thank you.
Did that answer?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other questions?
For the Imagine School, when is that? Is that something that's just starting out?
Uh, this is the first year that we were able to make that contact with Imagine School and, um, affirm that commitment again through, uh, Desert Recreation District's, uh, work. And that, those programs are going to start in July for one month.
Okay. Don't forget because, uh, they got a new, um, principal, so he's really changing a lot in the school, which is great because my, both of my kids attend the school. So they're really liking the whole new programs, everything they're starting to add up. So.
Awesome. And it's opened the doors for, for us as well. So we're really excited. Chair, if there are no other questions?
Any other questions, Chris? And then, uh.
If, if I can introduce, um, Mr. Montano with regards to item number four. I'd like to introduce, um, Mr. Manuel Montano. He's the president of the Coachella Valley Soccer League and he appeared to give a presentation with respect to their operations, um, their programs and a variety of those kind of components that you guys can be more familiar with their programming directly.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Manuel Montano. Soy el presidente de Coachella Valley Soccer League. Nuevas caras, felicidades. Okay. Ahí tienen su, la boca en sus manos. La forma que nosotros trabajamos. Um, tenemos las categorías, todas las categorías. La categoría U cinco es completamente gratis. Es un programa nuevo que tenemos y no cobramos ni un cinco. Entonces, además categorías que son de las seis para arriba cobramos treinta dólares que vienen siendo dos temporadas. Empieza en septiembre y se acaba en julio. Aquí viene adultos es lo mismo, veteranos lo mismo y mujeres es lo mismo. Las cantidades de adultos son cuarenta dólares. Las veteranas veinticinco, veteranos veinticinco y las, y femeninas un treinta. Que es lo que incluye parte de la registración. En durante los torneos damos lo que son trofeos y medallas al primero, segundo y tercer lugar. Al cuarto le damos medallas. Reconocemos al mejor portero a con un trofeo, guantes. Ah, igual al campeón goleador. Damos un voucher de cada, en una tienda de cien dólares para que se compre taquetes el, el, el campeón goleador. Okay. El segundo torneo damos dos balones a, a los equipos que quedan en el, en el torneo. Y en el segundo torneo reconocemos a todos los niños con un trofeo individual. Lo que vienen siendo desde las cinco hasta la, hasta la U once, U doce que tenemos, ser un trofeo individual a cada niño. Se reconoce con su nombre y todo. Este, en los adultos son dos torneos, es lo mismo. El primero, segundo y tercer lugar, camisas, al campeón le damos una camisa de campeón. Al segundo lugar, hay un premio monetario que le damos. Ahí tienen las cantidades ustedes. Okay, primero, segundo y tercer lugar. A la menina, a lo que es un mujeres, es lo mismo. Dos torneos están, primero, segundo, tercer lugar, están los premios que les damos. Okay. Los números de, de jugadores que tenemos registrados ahorita, lo que son en, en, en niños son cuatrocientos cincuenta niños y adultos son mil veintiséis. Okay. Uh, son cuarenta equipos de niños, de adultos son cincuenta y tres. Esta es una, una nueva torneo que tenemos de siete contra siete. Tenemos dieciséis equipos. Y de mujeres tenemos, de veteranas tenemos seis equipos. Okay. La mayoría de los, los jugadores que juegan aquí, el sesenta y tres por ciento es de aquí de, de residentes de Coachella. Y los otros vienen siendo de Altosí, de alrededores, de Pan Spring, de la quinta, andesas que vienen a participar aquí con nosotros. Okay. En el mes de diciembre les hemos posada a todos los jugadores. Está la cantidad que gastamos. Llevamos premios, hacemos rifas, hacemos todo. El día de niños, ahí está la cantidad de lo mismo. Hacemos premios, uh, regalamos comida, todo para lo que es para los niños igual como, igual con los padres. Vienen lo que se, lo que especificamos, lo que es de la preparación de taxis, lo que gastamos. Lo que de la seguridad que nos piden, eran la cantidad que gastamos por año. Los files de mantenimiento que ahora tenemos nosotros en la cincuenta y tres, que es el campo tres y el campo cuatro. Ah, gastamos seis mil dólares por, por año, lo que es el mantenimiento de cortas acá, que todo. Pintura. Lo que nos cobran por pintura nosotros y, y lo que pagamos al, al que nos pinta los campos, vienen las cantidades aquí. Compramos dos sets de porterías, uno para la U ocho y uno para la U diez y es la cantidad que nos gastamos también. Okay. Ah, por lo que ese árboles, mantenimientos y toda la menina cincuenta y tres. Está la cantidad que nos gastamos por año. Y la cantidad que miran abajo del tres y cuatro es la cantidad que pagamos, que estamos pagando por año, lo que es del agua. La última. Lo que es, eh, referis, pis, también lo tienen la cantidad de ustedes ahí. Todo. No sé si tengan preguntas.
Sí, yo tengo una pregunta.
Sí.
Este, es la primera página donde tiene los precios de, uh, de lo que se gana en los torneos. Curiosidad, porque la diferencia en el precio, por ejemplo, de primer lugar para adultos, donde son los hombres de mil quinientos, primer lugar, y luego para las mujeres, primer lugar tiene quinientos.
Ah, ahí se la va, porque son seis equipos y, y en el equipo de, de hombres vienen siendo entre doce o veinticuatro equipos porque son dos divisiones, una de primera y una de segunda. Entonces pues es lo que nos basamos también. Entiendes? Quisiéramos que fuera igual, para que fuera, fuera todo parejo, pero nosotros como liga pues sacaramos más dinero y recursos para lo que ese dinero lo somos recursos para los niños. Entonces, de aquí sacamos el recurso que es para los niños. Porque todo esto lo hicimos una reducción gracias a, a lo que fue ustedes y lo que fue, uh, este, la, los miembros de, de la ciudad. No nos están cobrando parques a nosotros nada. Entonces nosotros tuvimos que bajar nuestros precios para, para darle más a los niños. Entiendes? Nosotros hicimos una reducción de todo esto de nuestros gastos.
Entonces para las mujeres nomás tienen seis equipos, dijo?
Sí, correcto.
Para los hombres son de doce a veinticuatro.
Sí, en, en primera división, lo que viene siendo primera son doce y lo que son en se, en segunda, son de veinticuatro, hasta pueden ser veintiocho equipos.
Equipes.
Correcto.
Y las mujeres nomás son seis equipos.
Correcto.
Okay.
El precio de treinta para los niños, el cuarenta para los adultos y treinta es para un año.
Correcto. Son dos temporadas.
Y el dinero que, de, que ganas de ahí, eh, eso dinero va para los, los ganadores de, de los juegos, ¿verdad?
Correcto.
Ah, hay un, un programa que tienes que los niños puede hacer una aplicación para ganar un scholarship, ¿verdad?
No lo tenemos todavía. Estamos trabajando en eso, pero la, la forma que nosotros le apoyamos es haciendo categorías como la U cinco no cobramos nada. Como la U cinco, no, los niños, es un programa, no, es un programa que estamos usando para que no paguen ellos. Y ahorita estamos trabajando en la categoría seis para la nueva temporada, no paguen también. ¿Por qué? Porque si ustedes no están apoyando a nosotros, no cobranos en parques, nosotros también tenemos que darle a, a la comunidad. Que es, es, es mi pensamiento. Pero es la forma que nosotros lo podemos ayudar a ellos.
Um, Maritza, do we have, we have a scholarship that's available to?
We make that known.
Yeah.
En el principio de cada temporada, ustedes saben que tenemos nosotros la ciudad en el scholarship cuando pueden aplicar ellos y agarrar la mitad de reembolso. So, eh, eso sí, pero la pregunta que le estás haciendo sobre si ellos mismos tienen uno separado.
Hmm, sí, separado y también como, como sus, sus niños, cómo, cómo agarran esa aplicación para, para ganar el chance para no pagar, ah, porque.
Ustedes saludan cuando entran a la temporada, a saber de foundation scholarship?
No.
A lo mejor sería una.
Ah, pues en, en verdad, pues a veces, uh, tenemos siete años lo que es en la liga. En verdad no somos una liga que estemos cada, cada martes que haya parques de recreación, estemos aquí. Somos una, algo que nos dejamos trabajar a ustedes. Si miran, van a mirar una o dos veces por año porque gracias a Maritza y lo que sabe, nos, nos han abierto aparte y nos ayudan mucho. Entonces no somos unas personas que nos gusta estar aquí porque tienen cosas más importantes que hacer ustedes también. Entonces nosotros nos preocupamos para que los niños sigan jugando y sacarlos de, de, al, del vicio que está ahí ahorita, ¿entiendes?, del teléfono, al, tenerlos ocupados en el parque. Eso, eso es lo que, la visión que nosotros tenemos. Entonces si nosotros tenemos la categoría U cinco y U seis gratis y tenemos más equipos de adultos. and we have more teams of adults, we can do it ourselves, the same program. You know, I know you can support us, but we never applied for that.
I don't know how to translate this in Spanish, but I feel like we need to figure out a way where we can give them that access.
You read my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, a way to, to promote.
Have access, because we've given them the application before, but we can continue to do that.
Yeah, I think more of like promoting it more so that the community is aware, so promoting it more on the Instagram, the Facebook, the Twitter, so that the community is on the lookout and is informed that we have that foundation here in the, uh, City of Coachella, so that the, like, the community is informed and can apply and come. So that's what we can do ourselves.
Okay, and you, you tell me how to work, how to work on that, to communicate those also to the parents and all?
Yes, I think the City of Coachella, the, the person that is, is in charge of the social media, is the person that is going to put it. So it wouldn't be something that you would do, we would be in charge of that on the website, the web, the Facebook, the Instagram. So you wouldn't have to do anything, we would do it all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Coachella Valley Soccer League has an Instagram, it has a Facebook?
Uh, Facebook.
On Facebook.
That's how it is, Coachella Valley Soccer League, and it comes from the same school. There is all the events we put, and all the games, we play games too, we put them on live, they can follow us.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I would also like to congratulate you for the, the, the great work you have done, because I have heard many things from you, they have been good. Uh, because it's always been my question and, 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 and thank you for what you have done for the city. Um, equally, for the scholarships that we have, uh, I know it's a limit that they give each team, right, Maritza? Is there a certain amount that they could use? I remember something like that of the?
We did limit it to twenty, um, the limit for, um for league or for programming is twenty, for the reason that we didn't want that all the ones to be in a league. Uh, what we have noted is that the majority of the people who, um, use the Foundation Scholarship are usually the, the, um, the sports that pay more, which usually are American football and baseball. Usually, the, the registration is like one, one hundred and twenty, I think American football is two hundred and twenty. So I think at least for that, there is not, not, not much interest in the scholarship for soccer. Because obviously, the year compared to, is much lower, but yes, we can continue to support it through Facebook and through Instagram about the Foundation Scholarship.
Uh, oh, excuse me.
Uh, and also, when it starts the season of each different sport, we give, um, because we have it in Spanish and English, the application is on the website, and, and always, we always give it at the beginning of the season. Because usually, uh, uh, when they are registered, all the families.
Yeah, for that, sometimes, as I said, the first twenty are the ones that will have this opportunity. Uh, I have another question, and then I have another question after.
The division, we, we forgot, also, uh, what I said, if you have a father with three, four children, we also support it in that way, you know? Because in fact, as I said at the beginning, we are not a league that we are, we are volunteers. Uh, you can look at the finances that we have, we are, in fact, we never came to ask for anything, thanks to God, as I said. We are people that are working for the community. The day they want, Maritza, let me see, the finances are very good, thanks to God, and every year, we are doing that. But also, for the help that you give, there is, there is to recognize also.
Uh, the question I have about the park of the fifty-three, uh, has there been a recent maintenance? Or is it, I'm good, because I went there, it was like a month, I went there, and I saw that it was a little, I saw something. Maintenance, because you are the ones that are the most attached to, to the, uh?
Close, the park.
Eh? No, no, yeah, uh, the street or?
The building, what's it called?
The one that is attached to you, right?
Yes.
So, um, when, no, they haven't made maintenance, I have a feeling that I went there, so I don't know if they made maintenance recently?
Yes, yes, it's doing maintenance, and we are working. Right now, in fact, uh, honestly, we were on the podium, it surprised us more or less, what was the cover, the water? Because it took a little, it took a year for it to come, and when it came, we were scared, in fact. And if, and, and we stopped a little, because we had to join us to practice what was the cost of this, in fact. But, in fact, uh, we are working, and right now, we are doing maintenance, and we are going to go back to, to, to play games again.
Yeah, because I know that the city is trying to give a little, with a plan, a, 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 a schedule, right, of payments to, to achieve what was delayed. Yes, because they told us about what had happened, and, and, but there was a schedule to fix it. So, but yes, yes, I looked at it another time, I went there, and yes, it was a little, yeah, I saw that it was lost. That's why I asked for a question, to see if it's another time.
That's correct, I, I assure you that in two months, it will look well, and it will look at games another time. That's what is important, the problem is that in the past, we put lights and all, and we burned lights, we, we fired them. We caused a lot of damage, and the towers were worth a lot, what is the cost also of, of, of the league. And we caused a lot of damage to all that, all that, to move all that, and it was also something that, that the league also spent a lot of money on that. Uh, but we are working, and we are going to do it well.
Okay, thanks, okay.
I have a question, but I think it's more for you. Um, is it a first come, first served basis for the Foundation Scholarship? Or is there a selection process, like, is there X amounts?
We, we have, the, the Foundation Scholarship is healthy, so there is no fund issue with regards to that. So there is no criteria beyond them being a resident, and it being one of the programs that is offered through either the youth leagues or the Desert Recreation Program.
And then do we have, uh, like data in regards to, is there a specific, when we're looking at sports, is there a specific sport that has higher usage of that, that it's more towards one than the other?
And that's what I mentioned earlier, so it's the more expensive sports that seem to be taking a higher use of that. And I think it's really guided because of the fact that it's a higher cost to, to register.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the public comments?
Um, I have not received any, and I do no one on, uh, via Zoom, so no public comments at this time.
So we're going to report and request?
We are.
Maritza.
Yes, come on up. Please, if you can comment on the number of the new one.
My name is Manuel Montano, president of the League of Coachella Valley Soccer League. Uh, I am here also to, to ask for a more field. We are limited in fields, we have three fields, just the flowers, look at the numbers that we have. Uh, we are looking at what is the number four of the backduma. The number four separates all the rest of the other league. We didn't have any problems there, because it's separated, what is, what is the one, two, three, four, and the number three. And the number four, well, it's divided. So, we asked for this opportunity, because in fact, we are ending the fields, the, the ranch of the flowers, with the number of people that we have. On Saturdays, you can go for a walk, we have more than eighty people there. Bring the cars to, to the ground, with the great competition that we are having here in Coachella. Same, the children, what are on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, it fills the parking lot. And we took the opportunity, just, we have seven years working, and I think it will have to be a balance also to, to give us a more field with lights, that's what we asked for, just. Okay, gracias.
Alright, yes, reports and requests.
So, reports and requests, uh, so be any commissioner comments? Do you have any commission comments?
No comments.
No comment.
No, no comments, I mean, this is our first time here, so. Also ask her.
Yes.
We'll bring it up for the following, as well, too.
At this point, I mean, you know, I didn't mention the, the social media thing, and, um, you know, I know the City of Coachella, I, I, I do follow it, and, uh you know, I knew, I do know they pump out some information, but, uh, if that can maybe go to the city council, I don't know if that's something that's possible for uh, this department to just pump out, like, just, just stuff that's happening in our, in our parks and recreations, maybe videos of some of these some of these events going on, right, and, uh, I don't see it too much, uh, currently.
So, so the city does have a P I O, and I, um, the only reason I just, um, I, I wanna I guess my comment back to the commission is, I think that writing a lot of different places where people have to look for information from the city could become confusing. And I think that's why for all the commissions, we try to pump out all that information through the city, the city's, um, modules. But we can definitely increase that, that's what I think I'm hearing from a couple of the commissioners.
Who, uh, do we have, um, a media manager?
We have a public information officer.
Got it, public information.
And that was a new position created about two years ago for that specific intent that we wanted to standardize. Um, who was pumping out the information, so it was kind of funneled through one individual or one department, as opposed to multiple departments all posting different things.
Yeah, and she mentioned the P I O, so that's what it stands for, so.
Got it. So I think one, one thing we could do is if we end up going to those events, maybe, like, if we do the video me, uh, sending that video to the P I O, so it gets uploaded, because I understand the reason of main, mainstreaming, because it's important, a lot of numbers get lost, information. But maybe if we do end up going to those events, recording or whatever it is that we create, sending it over, so it does get posted, so it's through one person only.
Most definitely, and the P I O is, I'm also at most of these events, so there is, uh, they, they're doing Facebook Live at the events that are being posted through the social media, as well as if that person is not there. Myself or Vincent are both at the events. We are, we, we either alternate the events, or we are both at the events, and we also provide that media backup. But any additional events that you guys think might be worth us also sharing, please feel free to communicate those with us as well, and we'll try to add those as well to the the information that's being provided.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I have, uh, some comments, so, um, I think you brought up some points as well, that we will, you guys will let us know a little bit more about the programs that are happening around, you know, regarding parks and recreation. Just because before, we weren't getting as much information or anything like that. Um, you know, if you, if we bring that up more, I feel like the table now here seems like to be a little bit more interested in attending those as well. Uh, I know I have seen Robert attend some of the, uh, what was it, for the one here, for, uh?
Mental health?
The mental health, I see him, uh, attend there as well, too. And then also, if we could bring in the, for the Coachella Valley Soccer League, for the usage of war, see how it works out for us? Or if it's something that we could work in, if we're seeing that they're giving a lot, I mean, honestly, to me, the best thing is just no fees for those, for their own, that's a big help. And honestly, I would like to see maybe a little bit more, if we could help out there, I know there's a lot of things going on between, you know, both of the leagues on that, for, for, you know, fields. If it's something that we could comment at them, I would like to, you know, we would like to see if it's something that's in the works that we could work with. Um, so like that, if we could bring it up, you know, following meeting or anything like that, you know?
So we hope to have, um, Coachella Youth So, um, Sports Association Soccer, which is the other soccer league that we have, um, that uses the city's facilities. We'd actually asked them to be present this evening, but they did not respond until Thursday, um, which is too late, it didn't make the cutoff for us to post the meeting. So we have asked them back for the June meeting, and, um, maybe after they do their presentation, we can bring back the, the item um, in July, so that way we can have both leagues present, and we have opportunity to have that discussion for us to, for that dialogue to happen. Um, Commissioner, you know that the M O U would be amended, and it would remove, uh, field four at Bagduma from the access from one league and be reassigned, that, that is the request, that, their request is to amend the M O U and basically um, remove the access from one league to give it to the other. So we do need, we can definitely bring that back, but I, I just, um, my thought would be to have the other league present first, so that we can hear, um, both of their kind of comments and programs, and then we'll bring it back in July, and we can have dialogue on how the commission would like to move forward on that, if that's agreeable.
For that meeting in July, do we need to have both, uh, teams, both leagues?
We will invite both.
And if they don't, like, if one doesn't show up, we can still have that discussion and make that decision, perfect.
Yeah, they, they do not need to be here for, neither one actually needs to be here, it really is the commission's recommendation at that point, but we most definitely will invite them both.
Perfect, yeah, I like that idea, that's great.
Then, what are we, uh, really quick, um you have, like, I'm pretty sure they're on the website somewhere, but maps of the locations of all the parks that we're using for soccer league or for football?
Sure, I'm well happy to email those to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, of course.
Yeah, just to be more familiar about when they're throwing out field three and field four.
Right.
I hear them, I stumble, those fields, I'm like, well. But I have to go back to the map, but.
And maybe for our next meeting, um, another, uh, actually, I think I'll put on two items, just to familiarize the, the commission. Uh, the, we have an M O memorandum of understanding with all of our leagues as well, that lays out the different uses. Uh, so we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, um, to give you just, just background on that, as well as the park fees.
Right, thank you.
And anything else that the commission, um, thinks of, please feel free to, you know, share those ideas with us. Um, don't email off, please, um, then it would violate Brown Act. Um, and we'll see if the clerk can give you guys some more information on the Brown Act and the committees as well.
Yeah, it's gonna, about to say about the Brown Act.
Yes.
Okay, and then you guys have any more comments or anything?
And then I will be sending out calendar invites, um, as per the request made at the last commission meeting, I hadn't done that yet, because I knew we were going to beat a new commission, um, so I'll send out calendar invites to all of the, uh, city's events that are planned through the year. See a lot of that.
So now we're at a public works director commentary.
I don't have any additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, and then?
We join.
We adjourn, and then it's at five thirteen?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.